Call this meeting to order. We have a quorum of the board present. And as we start, I do want to make a mention to all of the board members. Please move your microphones close to your mouths. We have had some community members that have let our administration know that some members are not able to be heard. So you've got to really speak very clearly and right into those microphones. If everybody will stand, please, and remove their hats, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Okay, at this time, Michelle, roll call, please.
Dr. Dave Bardot.
Here.
Bobby Braun.
Jill Maddick Nelson.
Here.
Kristen Mattmiller.
Here.
Andy Mary.
Here.
Angie Schreiber. J.D. Schrader. Danny Pyatt.
Here.
Catherine Solon.
Here.
Okay. Item number two, citizens and delegations. At this time, we have some recognitions that we would like to do. We're so glad and honored to have so many of our staff, as well as our students and parents with us tonight for this special night. So give me a moment. I'm going to come around to the front. And when your name is called, come down, receive your certificate, and then stand right over against the wall. Mrs. Oginski will give us more direction as to what she wants us to do.
Okay, so tonight, we are going to be recognizing several staff, students, and guests for their participation and role in the Veterans Day Assembly at the Anago Middle School. First, we would like to recognize Zoe Smith. Zoe led our students, staff, and community members in the Pledge of Allegiance. Zoe, if you are present, please come down and get your picture made and your recognition award.
I will also say that all of the students that are present and those that are not present, in addition to the certificate, they will also be receiving one of the shell casings from the 21-gun salute from that day of the Veterans Day program. So we'll be sure that Zoe receives her certificate as well as her shell casing.
Okay, next, we have Kylie Kopetsky, Liliana Greasy, Jamie Sudi, Xander Lundwall, Marley Lenzar. These students all created and designed the program brochures that were handed out to those that were in attendance at the Veterans Day program. Please come forward. Thank you, Mr. Leiderman. Thank you, ladies. Nice job. Next, we would like to recognize Natalia Holman and Bailey Steckbauer, who created and read their poems to the audience. Natalia and Bailey, please come forward. Okay. Next, we have Bryson and Imberly Deppies. They assisted our veterans with folding the flag. Bryson and Imberly, please come forward. Next, we would like to recognize Dan Person and Terry Deppies. These are our guest veterans who folded the flag of the United States of America. Dan and Terry, please come forward.
Dan's at the county board meeting.
Next, we would like to recognize Ms. Jill Maddick Nelson. She was a guest speaker for the Veterans Day Assembly. Ms. Jill Maddick Nelson, please come forward. Yes, an outstanding job. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Tom Maticecki, who was a veteran guest speaker for our Veterans Day Assembly. Mr. Maticecki, please come forward. Can we have the first students come back down? I believe that's Kylie, Liliana, Jamie, and Xander and Marley for a separate photo op. Oh, okay. Be sure and hold your certificates open. Smile. Thank you. Special thank you to all.
And now we'll have our student representatives report.
It's just me again today.
I'm Solon.
I've got kind of a mouthful for you. So I'm going to run through our outline pretty fast so I don't waste all your time. But in the academics category, we had, last meeting, I told you guys about the new science teacher that the high school was welcoming. And I had a little, I asked her a question, and I have a little response from her on how she's liked her return to AHS as a teacher. So she said, "It has been wonderful coming back and joining the team as a teacher at AHS. I am so happy to be back and have had great experiences with staff and students alike, especially my physics 1 and 2 classes. The students have been flexible with me on this new journey, and for that, I'm grateful." So it's kind of nice to connect and let you guys know how she's doing. In the field trips category, there was classes of Miss First that were able to attend and participate in the chili cook-off contest during the Christmas parade. And from what I heard, it was super fun and a great way to be involved in the community for those classes. And Mrs. Nanamaker's Infinite Toddler class also recently attended the school forest and had the chance to connect with younger students from the district. So I also heard that was super fun. Special events, on December 14th, there was the Wurz Grand reopening of the greenhouse and the CTE open house. I know at least a few of you attended, as I saw a couple of you there and got the chance to say hi. And from my point of view, I thought the ceremony and the whole history leading into the reopening was extremely inspiring, and the community support to get there was also really inspiring. And the feedback that I got from teachers and community members alike was that it was a great turnout, and they were extremely pleased with the event. So I thought it was really cool. And all the talk, like the speech and the vomit and everything, like it was just, I think it's just really inspiring to hear that. I don't know, for me, I'm like super emotional about that stuff. Like, I cried listening to Mr. Olson speak, because it's just like, it's crazy that you don't notice those things in like your own hometown. And then you like hear somebody talk about it, and you're like, wow, that's really cool. So that was awesome. And then December 18th, tonight, is the choir concert. And then tomorrow, there's the band concert here at the high school. And then this week, we also had holiday dress-up days. Today was pajama day. And then we have holiday character day tomorrow, candy cane attire on Wednesday, holiday colors on Thursday, and the grand finale is the ugly sweater contest on Friday. Looking ahead, there's a graduation meeting on December 22nd. So I'm a senior, obviously, so that'll be exciting. I think it's, it's not like, we're not thinking about graduation yet, but it's kind of crazy that it's put on the map now. We're having meetings about it. It's a little scary, but... And then sports and clubs. Girls' basketball is at home tomorrow, and boys' basketball is at home on Thursday. And over holiday break, the boys' hockey team has their annual holiday tournament, the 27th and 28th, in town at the Langley County Multipurpose. So not much going on in Anago for sports in the next couple of weeks, but they have away games for all the other winter sports and stuff. But that's just what's at home. Any questions?
Do you have your ugly sweater ready for Friday?
Yeah, I actually do. I wear the same one every year. I don't know if anyone notices, but it's never won.
We want to tell.
Maybe it's going to win this year, who knows? But thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. We have some other students that came, so we want to present those certificates right now.
So at this time, we would like to call Marley and Oliver to come forward to receive their certificates. Marley and Oliver. Or Xander? Is it Xander? Marley. Yep, yes. She's shy.
Okay. Item C is public comment, and we did not have anybody to sign up for public comment. So we will move to item three, consent agenda. Letter A is approval of agenda, minutes, and financial reports, requests for overnight travel, report of district retirements and resignations, and report of district new hires. I will look for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the agenda, minutes from the November 27th, 2023 Board of Education meeting, December committee meeting minutes, district retirement and resignation report, report of new district hires, request for overnight travel, financial reports for November 2023, consideration of current bills, checks number 7406 through 7540 in the amount of $300,426.51. A H, H, A, C, H's, number 232400384 through number 232400572 in the amount of $1,130,342. NYU transfers in the amount of $15,903.64 for the total of $1,446,672.15.
Motion has been made by Bobby. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I do not.
Are there any questions or discussion from board members on the motion of the floor?
I would just like to say thank you to the staff, specific to the resignations, and notably to the staff member with 10 years with our district. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. If you are in favor of the motion on the floor, vote yes. If you're not, vote no. Would anybody like to change their vote? All right, the vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Item number four, administrative reports. Letter A, Director of Business Office. I'll turn this section over to our district superintendent.
So attached, we have the Director of Business. Her report is attached, and she is present if anyone has questions. Item B is the Director of People's Services and Special Education. The report is attached, and Mrs. Burcon is present if anyone has questions. Item C is the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And for her report, we will see a presentation by our instructional coaches, and I believe Ms. Stutzreem will be introducing them.
Good evening. The instructional coaching program here in Anago is in the forefront of the state. As you look to the DPI and what they're doing around instructional coaching, we now have coaching competencies. As our Act 20 reading bill is unfolded in Wisconsin, a lot of it stems around the instructional coaching, around the Tier One model. So we have a very strong instructional coaching model here at Anago that we're very proud of. And we want to make sure that everyone understands the different parts, because a lot of these people are behind the scenes doing the work, but they're not in the forefront like a classroom teacher who might be communicating with families and community members. But they're doing a lot of great work behind the scenes. So we wanted to make sure everyone was aware of what they were doing and how impactful instructional coaching can be on student achievement of every student in this district. So they're going to do a presentation for you. We have different grade levels. So our Ms. Berger, who is not here today, but she does have a slide with her voice on it. She is our 4K coach, so she helps across all of the elementary schools at 4K. We have Ms. Fear, who is our kindergarten and first grade coach. We have Ms. Willie, who's our second and third grade coach. We have Ms. Kirsch, who's fourth grade through eighth grade. And then Mr. Waniger, who is our coach at the high school, ninth through 12th grade. You can go to the next slide. So here are our coaches. And when you go to the next slide, Ms. Berger has presented for her 4K coaching, so if her sound works. So I'll talk for Courtney. So a lot of the 4K focus, she's been doing a lot around the play workshop and the language building strategy. She works with different classes in the area to work around not only literacy, but also a big push with Paige Richards, which her consulting does around math. So she actually has Paige Richards come into the 4K classrooms and do a fishbowl where all the students are around, and she models a lot of great strategies for our teachers and for our students. We're really working on upping our literacy in 4K and our math skills, that it's not just play. It's play with curriculum attached to it. So specific questions on how you question a student, how many times you're questioning and having a conversation back and forth, some of those great skills that they're working on at that 4K level. So she's doing a lot around that literacy piece, doing small groups in the classrooms and making sure that they're focused from data, just like we do in the other grades, that you're never too young to learn some of those skills and have that implemented into your classroom. So Ms. Berger does a great job along with our 4K teachers. The 4K data, as you've seen, is really good as kids leave 4K, and a lot of that is because of the teachers and Ms. Berger and the relationship that they work on to improve our student scores every day. So we thank Ms. Berger for her work.
Hi, my name is Trisha Willie again, and I'm the 2-3 coach in the district. I'm going to talk a little bit about coaching cycles, which is a large portion of what we do in the classroom. So, perfect. Coaching cycles are student-centered, and they create confidence in our teachers and the effectiveness of our classroom instruction. So they provide the teacher and the coach time to make a measurable impact on teaching and learning. So generally, a coaching cycle happens over three to five weeks. So we're spending a great deal of time with a teacher or teachers for three to five weeks. We're focusing on long-range goals and short-range goals around standards, district non-negotiables, and units of study. So this year especially, our reading and ELA implementation. We co-plan and co-teach and collect student evidence so we can have data that drives us. It takes place with individuals right now, but it can also take place with a team in the future. And we measure our results with a results-based coaching tool, which I think I have on the next slide. Yes. So this is an example of one of my own. I took the teacher name off. So we look at this results-based coaching tool throughout the coaching cycle. So we talk about what the students are going to do, where our priority standards are. We have starting data from the previous, this is a reading one, a previous reading module. And then we talk about what are the teacher goals? What are they going to do? And we usually have, in this case, we had five different things that we were kind of focusing on. And then the third column is the things that I do with the teacher throughout that coaching cycle. So walkthrough forms, co-teaching, anything, creating things, data collection, anything that has to do with what we're doing. And then at the end, the teacher learning, we list all of the things that the teacher has learned or implemented in their class because of our coaching cycle. And then we look at the data and how it changed. So the hope is that there's growth because of what we're implementing. And this one in particular shows growth. We had zero kids proficient, and by the end, we had four. So we are moving the kids out of that non-proficient and red into that, almost their proficient category. And then we also have a walkthrough form. So this is an example of a walkthrough form. So sometimes when we're in our coaching cycle, we just are collecting student evidence. So we go in and we look at different categories around ELA. So student engagement strategies that are used. What standards are being taught or learning targets are being taught that day. What we're seeing in whole group lessons, what we're seeing in individual or small groups, the closing we see. We're walking the walls to look at what kind of anchor charts are there, what kind of tools are there for kids to use. And then at the end, there's always feedback around what we saw in the classroom and there, and questions that we can reflect and work on to talk about how we can continue our cycle. Any questions? It's a lot, but I think we've got a lot of things in place that are helping teachers, and they're feeling more confident. I think it was really overwhelming at the beginning. But Stacy's going to talk about being a curriculum specialist, and we did a lot of things to help teacher, build teacher capacity and make them feel more confident. And I think we're getting that confidence, and we're seeing better results, so.
I'm Stacy Fear. I'm the K-1 coach. One of our jobs as an instructional coach is a curriculum specialist. So especially in an implementation year with new curriculum that, and a primary resource, that can be very trying, because we don't know where we're going, because it's our first time in these modules. So as instructional coaches, we've really been trying to help our teachers kind of look at these modules and kind of figure out what we need to teach, our must-dos, and what we can have as our may-dos. So I have a link, Dustin, if you want to open that. We call it our blueprints for each module. So it's based off of teaching by intent. So what we did for each of our teachers is we pulled out the power standards and the supporting standards that our teachers have worked so very hard with for many years. And we put those in the forefront, because that's our curriculum, is our standards. So that lets us kind of see, we review them. This is what we're going to hit on our module. If you scroll down, Dustin, the next thing after the standards, and I think it will be on page two if you keep going, right there, then we looked at the assessments that are given during this module. Every Friday, there is a weekly assessment that's a formative. And then at the end of the module, we give the summative, the end-of-the-module assessment. So what we did for our teachers is we took each of the items that they would find every week. We put the standard and then the actual question. And then we also correlated it to the end mod. So then we knew if a student was struggling, let's say with item two, if we didn't do something in our teaching to address that, then we're probably going to get the same results at the end. So this kind of helped us get that clarity of what to focus on. The last thing we did as coaches, and if, Dustin, you go down past those little graphs right there, then we were ready to really look at our day-to-day instruction, the lessons. So into reading says that there are things in there that we can pick and choose what we want to do. The problem with an implementation year is we don't really know what to pick and choose. So looking at the standards and the assessments have helped us make those decisions. So we went through as coaches in every lesson. And if we highlighted in green, that was what we call, like, that's what you should really stick to that day in teaching. The other things are kind of may-do. If we have time, because teachers are short on time, things pop up, we know like we have to get through that part of the lesson to be successful. So we've been trying to help with these blueprints, and we talk about them every week in our PLCs. So then, Dustin, you can go back to the slideshow. The next screen is, we also made for each of the modules, we call these concept standards maps. So we took all of the learning targets that our teachers have made in past years, and we pulled them into like a one-pager. So if a teacher wanted just to have that in front of them, they would know exactly, this is the key learning written in student-friendly words that we are going to hit during these units. So it kind of shows you where we're going. And teacher clarity is a big indicator of student achievement and success. So we're really trying to help get that teacher clarity and help our teachers out. Any question on the blueprints or the concept standards maps? Okay, then, Jamie?
I'm Jamie Kirsh, and I am at the middle school and high school. So I work with grades four through eight. And I'm here to talk about things that you really love to talk about, and that's data. As a, as an instructional coach, that's one of our roles, is to really dig into that data and to facilitate conversations and try to make change based on that data, change in our instruction. And the two resources that we use for those reports are on your screen. One is FastBridge, and the other is EduClimber. And I'm not real sure how you, what your familiarity is with those, but I look at FastBridge, it's a screener. It's like a blood pressure check that we take throughout the year. Where is our system at? Where are our kids at? Do we need blood pressure medication? Do we need an intervention? Are they struggling with fluency? Is that what we need to do for them? So we use that screener to help create groups, to progress monitor. Is that medication working? We're going to test again. So that's how I look at a screener. That's when you get those FastBridge reports, it's a check to see where we're at. EduClimber is more of where all your medical records are housed. So all of the data that we have forward, Infinite Campus, FastBridge, it all comes together there so we can see a clear picture of your health, of our students' health. And that's kind of how I view it when I look at those two things. Now, we look at the school level. So I work with my administrators, my title team. We dig into that data, and then we try to change our instruction, whether it's intervention or with the classroom. Sometimes, I meet as a grade-level team. So I work with six or four or five... So I work with six, or four, or five, six, seven, eight. And I create with them, using that data, student learning objectives, which we call SLOs. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that terminology either. But we use that data to set those goals. It's part of our educator effectiveness, and we work throughout the year on trying to change the results. Sometimes we work with individual teachers. What's happening within your class? Let's dig into the data, and let's look, how can we make small groups within your classroom? And the next slide is going to show you a way that we do that. So we can work to dig into those assessments that Stacy was talking about. We do have our weekly module tests as a formative to check in. What I'm showing you up here is an example of one of our Module Three, and I think we picked Module Three for yours, two different grades. This is a fifth-grade module. But with our new resource, it has some really great reports. Right now, I'm implementing two new ELA resources, and they too give you reports, but this is a little bit more colorful. And so I put this one on here. And if you look to the side for the item analysis, it will actually dig down into the specific standard that kids are struggling with. And that was something that we did not have before. So it really leads to those conversations. What did you do in your room that they did so well on this standard? And we can, we can actually move to hit that standard. So we do look at formative, and we do look at summative. Do you have any questions about data?
How long have we been doing EduClimber? And does it work? And like, are we going to try and do this?
So last year was our first year, and we didn't have a lot of training, and it did have some glitches pulling stuff in. So I'm not as familiar as Stacy's used it in the past, so. I've used it for about, I'd say, six or seven years. Now, we're tabbing kids, making collections, pulling in intervention data, so I'm kind of training others as we're getting along. The administrators are very concerned to use it. It just really gives you a full picture.
It seems like we try to buy these every so often, and they never work very good. You know, like, the systems don't know how to talk to each other, and then I feel bad for you guys and for us.
It seems to be, it seems to be doing better this year than last year.
Can you remind me what's formative?
So formative is just a check. Like, your daily, your daily, yeah, daily checks. Like, how did you do on this week's, this, like, week's work? The summative is like the end of the unit. Did you, how did you?
Awesome. Hi, I'm Mike Quaniger. I'm the ninth through 12th coach of the high school. And I'm, I'm here to talk about another part of our jobs, which is being a learning facilitator, or we'll talk about it as being like a PD facilitator. We work with our admin teams before PD days, professional development days, to kind of make a plan, tailor professional development to the needs of our students and our teachers. And I brought an example today of the last one that I did this, this last Wednesday. Dustin, if you want to click on that, on the ACT presentation, to show you kind of an example of what we might do. So working along with Amy, I, we made a plan together to talk about our ACT, our State Assessment, with our teachers on that day. The biggest thing that we were doing, as you can see in the learning target there, was we were going to start drawing comparisons between the ACT, which is something, a huge, obviously, a huge assessment that our entire district is judged on, and our own assessments. So, and an outcome of that is, obviously, we want our students to be seeing the appropriate amount of rigor and being acclimated to the types of questions that they're going to be asked on these type of assessments before they get to the assessment. We, we don't want them to be seeing that type of rigor or those types of questions for the first time on this, on this assessment that means so much, obviously, in their lives and, and in our lives as educators. So what I did that day was I did what's called a gallery, a gallery walk. That's an instructional strategy where you take groups of people, groups of students or teachers in this case, and they facilitate discussions amongst them with, with various prompts, and they gather information onto charts or onto a slide. And then we do a literal walk around the room, and we have further discussions about what everybody gathered. So Dustin, if you can click through to the next one, and then just pick one of those top ones up there. What I did is I gathered sample ACT questions. So these are sample ACT questions from each of the different subject areas. We grouped teachers into their different subject areas, and they literally went through and they took, Dustin, if you can page down on that first English one, they kind of quasi took the, the assessment. On these sample ones, there's only 10 or 15 questions, but it really gave our teachers an idea of what students are being asked. We prompted them to look at specific things in the structure of both the text that's being offered in the, in the, in the samples, the questions that are being asked, and the answers that are being given because the ACT is, because it's a standardized test, it's a multiple choice test. So we talked about structure of how our multiple choice tests look versus how an ACT multiple choice test looks. So Dustin, if you could then go back to the slideshow, click on the next one of those, sorry, that's okay, click on one of those bottom links there. We then looked, took a look at the ACT college and career readiness standards. If you want to page down a little bit, Dustin, they're really wordy, there's a lot. But it, it gives us standards for where our students should be in all of those score ranges. So you can take a look through those on your own time as well. Like I said, there's, there's a lot. But we made comparisons to what we're doing in the classroom with those standards. Again, we want our students to be doing and practicing all of those standards in our own classrooms. So go to the next one, go back to the slideshow lesson, go down. And that, that's just an example of some of the prompts that, that we lined up for them. We gave them that first 10 minutes to just go through and take the assessment, read through it, go to the next slide. And then we lined up some prompts for them to discuss as groups, and they all brought, all of the teachers brought one of their own sample assessments from their classrooms, and we, we made comparisons with those. So obviously, then, the outcome, like I said, coming back to that outcome from the beginning, is to get our students on the same page with the ACT. We want them feeling familiar and comfortable with this assessment by the time they take it. Are there any questions? Like I said, this is just one example of something. This obviously had an ACT focus, and this might look different for each school. In the elementary schools, they might not be looking at it with an ACT focus, but that's, that's what I'm doing, obviously, at, at the high school level, so.
Sometimes you can make standards through, yes.
Any questions about PD preparation?
Mike?
Yep.
It's year three, right?
Year three, four.
Coaching.
Coaching, it's year two for coaching for me.
Year two?
For me, yeah. Last year was my first year.
I can't remember.
No, it's okay.
At my age, I have to ask questions.
Yep. You know, I was a German teacher for eight years, and then I still do German a little bit. I have two sections, so.
I don't remember, unless I'm wrong, a group presentation like this coming to us and actually telling us what you guys do. And I want you to know, I appreciate not only what you're doing, but that the time was taken, that you showed up tonight to explain to the board what you guys do for our district. And I just want to thank you.
So Dustin, if you go back to the presentation. So one other thing that we asked our teachers to do, because it's not just what we think we're doing, I think they're doing an amazing job, but we wanted to get some testimonials from our teachers to see how our teachers think of the coaching program is going at all different levels. So we put, there's about four slides that you can read through on your own regarding what teachers have said, and we just copied and pasted right from the survey just on here so that you can see what the teachers are saying as well. There's some positives, there's some, we asked them what we can do better as coaches to help us in the future. But a lot of them talk about how they were a little bit nervous at the beginning. At elementary, we haven't had like a true coaching program. We had a great coach that had left at the end of, or in the middle of the year last year. So it is nerve-wracking for our teachers to have somebody come in, non-evaluative, but walk alongside and help coach. And I think that, as you can see through some of the testimonials, it has really been a great positive for them, and a lot of them have said that their instructional practices are better, they feel more effective as teachers, it's somebody who can divvy up some of that work and look through that resource to help look at the data, to compile, to bounce ideas off of. If you're having a rough day, it's a coach that's sitting right there that can help you kind of navigate those things that occur in the classroom at minute to minute. They are that. They are the counselor sometimes of our teachers when our teachers are struggling because we, we have tough jobs in, as educators, and every day is different, and that coach walks alongside every one of our teachers and, and makes our students better. So I'll say thank you as well to them, and feel free to read through some of those at your leisure with what they, the teachers are saying about our coaching program.
Ms. Stutzer, would you say that each of these instructional coaches fulfill all of these roles?
Yes. So they divvied up all of them just so they could have the presentation, but everyone does all of those at all the levels. So when you're thinking behind the scenes, they are looking at data, they are breaking down resources, they are breaking down the standards, they are helping with instructional practices. Sometimes they're doing small groups within the classroom, they're giving feedback every day, they're planning professional development. I know Ms. Fear is doing some professional development on January 3rd when we come back as we recalibrate, because we're going to do our FastBridge for the winter, just to recalibrate our teachers. So they step up in all different aspects. I know Ms. Kirsh at the middle school is constantly meeting with people, talking about data. Ms. Willie has done professional development at the second, third grade level as well. Ms. Berger has taken on that role, and they run the PLCs, the professional learning communities, weekly. So they're the ones creating the agendas, making sure we're staying aligned, especially at the elementary schools, so that one school's not going off in one direction, that we're really focusing on that equity for all of our kids. They're the ones, along with the teachers, putting in that work. I think we're lucky to have them, so.
I would agree.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we have the report from the Director of Buildings and Grounds, and Mr. Lighterman is present if anyone has questions. And next, we have the superintendent's report. I'm not going to read everything verbatim. The big-ticket item for me was the focus group that we held December 6 at the Langley Senior Center. We had a rather good group, I felt, present, and we took away a lot of good information from our community. But more importantly to me, I left with five people who had signed up to volunteer in our schools to help. So I really feel like it is a true showing of how our community is willing to roll up their sleeves alongside our educators to help us turn the ship in the right direction. And not only that, but I also got a couple of people added to attend the Second Facilities Task Force meeting, which then leads me to the phenomenal job our CTE team did with the open house and the rededication of the Wors Greenhouse. Great production, great presentation by our staff. I felt it was well-attended, and while I was there, I also was able to snag another person to join our Facilities Task Force meeting. So again, I really feel like our community is coming together to help support our schools, and I don't think you could ask for more than that. And then just an update on admin evaluations, that I've started those, and then our HR update is just that we have some positions that are still posted out on weekend that we will be looking to fill those. Questions?
I would just like to echo the feedback on the CTE. I don't have a question, but I just, that was really awesome, the open host event. I attended that with, with two of my three children. It was very interactive. You talk about bringing the community in, so interactive from like young to adults. So it was awesome. Thank you very much. It was beautiful and well-attended, I agree.
Questions?
Hearing no questions, we'll move on to item number five, Board Action, letter A. Consideration to Approve Second Reading of Niola Update Policies for the Board, 32-2. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the second reading of Niola Update Policy for the Board, 32-2.
Motion has been made by Catherine. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing no discussion on the motion on the floor, the voting device is now open. If you're in favor of this motion, vote yes, oppose, no. Would anybody like to change their vote? All right, the vote is now closed, and the motion passes. That is now part of our policy. Dr. Bardo, you having computer issues there?
Of course. Do we need Dustin to come up a second?
No, I'll let her.
Give us just a short.
I need a mouse.
Catherine comes to save the day.
Of course.
Item B, Consideration to Approve Second Reading, Policy 2414, Human Growth and Development. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the second reading of Policy 2414, Human Growth and Development.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Nope. It had the first reading at the previous board meeting, and it was brought to committee prior to that.
Any comments on the motion on the floor? No comments or discussion on the motion on the floor. The voting device is now open. If you are in favor of the second reading of Policy 2414. Would anybody like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, and the policy carries. That is a second reading, that will become policy now. Item, letter C, Consideration to Approve Second Reading, Policy 8390, Animals on District Property. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the second reading of Policy 8390, Animals on District Policy, with the addition of the following amendment, which would be under Therapy Dog, and it would be K.
All employees. Dr. Bardo, would you please read that amendment that you're adding to the policy?
Yes.
All employees of the Unified School District of Anago shall not provide therapy dog services when they are being paid by the district for their assigned job duties.
I understand, Dr. Bardo, that you have labeled this item K under Therapy Dogs?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to speak to your motion with the amendment, please, sir?
Yes. If you remember, at the last meeting, I requested that, that the guidance counselor provide the district with their code of ethics and the rules and regulations of their association. That was provided to Glenda, our superintendent, and you all have copies of what we received. I'm going to read basically a few highlighted areas. Under the code of ethics, it says in seven, it talks about performing my volunteer duties. In 10, I will not accept payment for therapy dog services nor directly or indirectly solicit from anyone anything of economic value such as a gift, gratuity, or favor for my volunteer services. Under the rules and regulations, in part of five, it says if a member chooses to visit where she, he is working, she, he must do so as an unpaid volunteer. And just as a reminder to all our staff, if there is a dog present, under Rule 14, it says ask before entering. Always ask before bringing your dog up to a person for visiting. If you are entering a room, make sure everyone in the room wishes to have the dog visit. If one person does not want a visit, ask that person if it is okay to visit with the others in the room. If not, do not enter the room. So based on... So based on the talk about volunteer work, you can't do it at your work unless you're an unpaid volunteer. That's why I put K in. I want to thank Mrs. Burcon and Glenda, our superintendent, for putting a halt to this and stopping what was not... They've done now their due diligence for updating this policy. It's obvious that the previous administration did not do their due diligence allowing our workers to provide therapy dog services while they were getting paid.
Dr. Bardo, do you have a copy of that amendment that you can submit to Michelle?
Aye, sir.
For the record, please?
Yep.
Hold one second. Dr. Bardo, are you done with your discussion?
I am.
Okay, JD?
At the top of the document, the Alliance of Therapy Dog Rules and Regulations says, "Failure to adhere to these rules will jeopardize your membership and nullifies the liability insurance." But in Section 5, right after what you highlighted, if a member chooses to visit where he or she is working, she must do so as an unpaid volunteer. Members who use their dogs in their work are now able to purchase separate insurance to cover them in their workplace. So I guess I don't know if, you know, you really need that amendment. If the next sentence is allowing it.
Well, and further into that, it says if you take your dog to work with you, you must still complete at least one volunteer visit every three months to maintain your ETD certification. This volunteer visit may also be, or may be at your place of employment, but not during your paid working hours.
So my position is that any of our employees have contracts. They are paid on a daily rate for their services. When they work here during the day, they are a teacher. They are a guidance counselor. They are an administrator. To be able to bring in a therapy dog, they have to volunteer. So how do they volunteer in our situation? They can't come in on a holiday pay. They can't come in on a working day with their dog because we pay them as part of their contract for contracted days. And so I'm trying to make it very clear in my amendment that if they want to do services, therapy services, it is to be volunteer work.
Any other discussion on the amendment to the policy that's on the floor?
Can I hear it read one more time?
Yes, sure. "All employees of the Unified School District of Anaco shall not provide therapy dog services when they are being paid by the district for their assigned job duties."
That's what you've clearly recorded in the minutes? Thank you. Kristen, does that answer your question that you may have? Thank you. Any other discussion? Of the amendment of the policy that we're voting on. What we'll be voting on is the amendment first and then we will be voting on the second reading of the policy. Are there any other questions about the amendment of the policy? Hearing no questions of the amendment of the policy, you will be voting on adding item K under Therapy Dogs to the policy as Dr. Bardo has read. Would anybody like to have that read once again? Hearing nobody ask for that policy reading to add item K under Therapy Dogs, the voting device... Dustin, are you prepared? The voting device is now open. If you are in favor of the amendment added to the policy, vote accordingly. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the vote is now closed. The vote is tied for four, so the amendment fails. We are now back to the main motion on the floor, which is the second reading of Policy Number 8390, Animals on District Property. Any discussion of the main motion of the Policy 8390 as read? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open for the motion on the floor. I move the board to approve the second reading of Policy 8390, Animals on District Property. Would anybody like to change their vote? Vote is now closed. And the motion carries. That is now policy for our district. Item D, Consideration to Approve Second Reading of Policy 0167.3, Public Participation at Board Meetings. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the second reading of Policy 167.3, Public Participation at Board Meetings.
Motion has been made by Bobby. Would you like to speak to your motion, please?
I would. In looking at the draft with the changes noted in green and the strikeouts, struck out in pink, I have one question. I feel that the minutes from the board meeting in November are... There was several, there was amendments to the motion last month.
Fortunately, those minutes were already passed at the consent agenda. We cannot bring those minutes up at this time.
So then I would say no further discussion from me. No further comment from me then.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor?
So JD? The way I read this is you can submit agenda items to administration, but you don't have to public comment on them because that language is missing. And I guess I am happy about that. But that was the way I remember when I first got on the board eight years ago. I thought it was really weird that somebody couldn't come and talk about whatever they wanted. But under this, you still can.
That is my feedback as well as my understanding. And I base my vote on this as well, that that's what we voted on, was that public comment section would need to be related to an agenda item. So you can still request an item be added to the agenda, but it was my understanding. And I also looked at the minutes and looked at my notes too. And I'm not seeing it written down on my end, but I was fairly certain that was discussed, like very certain.
If something is missing, there could be an amendment to the motion on the policy, if somebody would like to make that motion.
So based on the number of amendments that this policy has already had?
This is a new night, new motion? Absolutely. Would you like to offer an amendment, Bobby?
Can I ask a question still, just to clarify?
Sure.
We have the language in there about adding an agenda item. What would the point of adding the agenda item be if we didn't also specify that it needed to be an agenda item in order to be addressed?
It could just be someone who wanted the public comment. They could just say, oh, look, I could get this added as an agenda item.
Thanks JD.
It could also be that somebody thought we should take action on something and so they want it added, they bring it to the superintendent's attention and if the superintendent wants, they add that as an action item. So it doesn't have anything in particular to do with comment, public comment.
So just adding an agenda item. So then therefore, we're not addressing whether or not the public comment needs to be an agenda item?
That's the way I read this right now.
Is it? Okay.
I will make a motion to amend. I just don't know my words, that's all. I think under public comment section of the meeting, letter A, adding language, which I don't have figured out yet. Currently reads, "Public comment shall be permitted before the board takes official action on any issue of substance."
As long as it's an agenda item.
Dustin, can this be put on the screen, please?
Oh, wait, maybe, maybe letter B. "Attendees must register their intention to comment in the public portion of the meeting upon their arrival at the meeting and note agenda item to be addressed." Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Since we don't have a letter D, you could say, "Under Letter D, comments made by the public shall be in reference to a specific agenda item."
Do you think you have to change A then? Any action of substance?
That's the same before you move into action.
Oh, "Public comment shall be permitted before the board takes an action." Okay, I see. Sorry.
My amendment is what Kristen just shared. I was just trying to figure out where to put it and what made sense with the...
Michelle, did you get that?
So just correct me if I'm wrong. So comments in public, or other comments shall be in reference to any agenda item.
Comments made by the public shall be in reference to a specific agenda item.
Okay, we're good.
That is a D.
You'll make that as a D?
Yeah.
Michelle, can you read that once again?
Comments made by the public shall be in reference to any agenda item. Tell me what I missed.
A specific agenda item.
A specific agenda, a specific agenda item. Comments made by the public shall be in reference to a specific agenda item. Yes.
Jill, is that what you would like your motion to be? The motion for the amendment on the floor now made by Jill is what Michelle has read. Jill, would you like to speak to that motion of the amendment?
I spoke on this portion last meeting as well. I do think it promotes proper chain of command. I think that is something that has been missed. And I'm not speaking for every person that has come and spoke during public comment in any capacity. What I am saying is there have been a number of times where the chain of command hasn't been followed. And I think that also increases the engagement and communication by going to the building admin first and then if you're not satisfied, going up the chain of command. Because oftentimes too, I think based on just some of the topics addressed or talked about, there could have been a resolution or just clarification that didn't need to get to the board. It's not really a board action. So I think it promotes that communication and also following the proper chain of command too.
Are you thinking of mostly for staff members or also for parents or something?
Nobody specific.
Okay, any discussion on the motion on the floor, which is the amendment to add the verbiage to letter D? That was Jill's motion. That's what we need to keep our discussion to. Any other discussion? Dustin, are you prepared? Okay, the voting device is now open. If you are in favor of the amendment to adding the verbiage from Jill's amendment. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the vote is now closed. And the motion passes. So now the motion on the floor is to accept the second reading of the public, of the Policy 0167.3, Public Participation at Board Meetings with the amended motion that was just previously passed. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, Dustin. And the motion passes. Letter E, RFQ, Request for Qualifications. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to direct administration to finalize the request for qualifications as discussed and release it on December 19th, 2023.
Motion has been made by Andy. Would you like to speak to your motion, please, sir?
No, I think we discussed this the last board meeting and at the committee meeting, so I think it's been discussed enough.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? The vote is now closed. And the motion passes. Item, Letter F, Future Ready Library. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the 2023 Future Ready Library Plan.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, this was shared to committee and voted to bring to the full board for vote tonight. With the presentation that's attached tonight, also shared at committee as well.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor?
So I just want to point out that we are late with getting this approved. This has to be board-approved and submitted into DPI. So this is at least a year past due. Some districts had it a couple of years ago. So we have to put in there the date in which board approval was received for the Future Ready Libraries Plan.
Any other discussion on the item from board member? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? And the vote is now closed. And the motion passes.
You did a great job.
While you're... So I'm not presenting it?
Oh, I guess they must have looked at your presentation.
Item G?
Well, can I say something since I'm here?
Um...
I was under the impression that I was presenting.
I'll give you a couple minutes. I'll give you a couple minutes. I mean, we already voted on it, so...
This will just take 30 seconds. So what I really like about this future library plan is that it kind of takes the 1970s library and what libraries look like and moves it into almost 2024, where we are doing so many things with technology and just all of the things. And so even though I didn't want to do the plan because I thought that I could have a few years to do it, it really made me appreciate where I want this library and this technology to go. And we're doing some really great things. I collaborate every single week with my library clerks, who are doing a lot of teaching, even though they shouldn't be, but I can't be in every classroom. And they are amazing. And we are equitable throughout all the elementary schools and have K5 technology and library instruction every single week for at least 30 minutes and just really doing some great things. So that's it.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work.
Thanks, Abby.
Item, Letter G, is that Altria? Settlement Offer Packet. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board to accept the Altria Class Settlement Final Allocation in the Amount of $11,156.
Motion has been made by Dr. Bardo. Would you like to speak to your motion, please?
I remember last year, we were part of a class action with a number of other school districts all around the nation. And it was about vaping, if I remember, and to try to stop it. So that's why we got some money.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? All right, the vote is now closed and the motion passes. Thank you. Item letter H, consideration to approve first semester and early graduates. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the first semester and early graduates as presented.
Motion has been made by Andy. Would you like to speak to your motion, please?
No, it looks like all these students have a plan for what they want to do graduating early. That's just great.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? And the vote is now closed and the motion passes. Thank you. Item letter I, report of donations. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the following donations. $2,000 from Julie Strong Memorial for the school forest, $2,000 from Julie Strong Memorial for high school gymnastics, and $2,000 from Julie Julie Strong Memorial for middle school track for a total of $6,000.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you for the generosity from Julie Strong Memorial for the donations for the various programs.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion on the floor? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? The vote is now closed and the motion carries. Thank you. Item six, new business, community, community conversation, work strategic planning. We, this is going to be postponed to a next meeting. Our presenter was not able to show tonight because of a, an emergency in the family. Item B, review proposed 2024 WASBE delegate assembly resolutions. You have the resolutions before you and Bobby is our delegate that will be at the convention in January and Andy is our assistant delegate?
Alternate.
Alternate? Thank you, Andy, for helping me out there. Are there any questions to the resolutions that are before you?
Personally, I'd like to give Bobby the and Andy, if he's available, the authorization to vote your conscience as a representative of this district. And you look at those and you make the decision based on what you hear from the other board members at the convention and vote your conscience. And I trust that you will make the right decisions.
I mean, just to ask, when I read through all of the ones that were approved, I would be in favor of those. And is there anybody that saw anything there that they're opposed to?
I'm not necessarily opposed. I'm just, I guess, a little hesitant on the artificial intelligence component, not knowing what that would look like, I guess, and how WASBE would present in those discussions, I guess. And there's not a lot of information, but I, that's the only one I'm feeling uneasy about.
Yeah, I think that's one where there will be discussion at the delegate assembly and then it will be clear to Bobby how she wants to vote on it then.
I will say what these resolutions are, this, if every one of these resolutions passes for board members who is not familiar with this, this process, these are resolutions that WASBE submits to our legislatures. This is not law after they're passed. This is just recommendations from the school boards from across the state that go to the convention and give their ideas and thoughts through the process. And it gives WASBE a platform that they can then lobby all of our legislatures across the state of Wisconsin. So I'm sure that it is pretty vague too, and I'm with you on that, Jill, with the artificial intelligence. And I'm sure this is going to be a discussion that's going to go a lot of different directions. I'm almost positive. In fact, if I can sneak in there during that part of it, I'd like to do that, just to hear that discussion in particular.
I'm looking forward to the meeting and I anticipate it being a long one.
Yes.
As well.
Yeah, I think part of it in their rationale, it's really that WASBE wants it to be part of the discussion.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And that's.
For what it looks like, where we.
Yeah, you want to be part of the discussion. So.
I understand it that way too. DPI licensing of clinical counselors, I'm opposed to that. It's on page eight, 4.635. WASBE supports legislation authorizing the Department of Public Instruction to issue an educator license to clinical counselors so school districts can employ clinical counselors to provide mental health services to students the same way other licensed district staff are employed to do so. I'm reading that as mental health services. Is that, is that how it's interpreted by anybody else?
That's the way that I would read it because they're, they're licensing, they want to give them license to provide that service.
So the reason I'm opposed to that is not because there is not a need for mental health services. It is my sincere hope that that, that what I'm about to say is also not twisted into trying to say that. I just simply get very cautious of ensuring there is healthy separation and distinction of roles. And public education is to educate. Our district and many others contract with outside agencies to bring in mental health therapists. So the mental health needs are still being met on site, speaking to our district specifically, by two to three or more contracted mental health providers. I feel very uneasy to now employ because I think that gets very muddy and it, it's not a clear distinction of roles and what we are here to do versus contracting skilled trained providers in certain areas to come in. So I am opposed to 4.635 for those reasons.
So as a, as a district board for our school district, are we asking Bobby whenever item line 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 come up, that she is going to be voting to strike those lines from this entire adoption of the recall and recreate the following existing resolutions? That would be Bobby or Andy, whomever is at the delegate at that point.
Can I ask a question?
You may, yes.
So I have not been at this meeting before and I'm assuming that all districts are represented. And so I don't know what the procedure is as far as, you know, striking 4635. I completely understand and support what you're saying, but just to be clear, I'm not sure on the procedure of how this.
I don't know if they will take this. Kristen might be able to. She's been a delegate in the past. Kristen, I think.
Delegate last year.
Yeah, so if you want to make an amendment, you, there's a sheet there for you to fill out and you have to do it ahead of time. And so they can put it up on the board so everyone can see the amendment and then you would have a chance to speak to it. But you have to go there ahead of time and prepare the amendment in a written form.
And do we decide this as a board prior to? Okay. Thank you.
And this, this would be the meeting that we're giving you the, the blessing because we do have a meeting prior to, we do have one more board meeting prior to the delegation, which is the Monday before the, the meeting. So we can put this on the burner, this particular one, unless the board would like to so strike that and authorize Bobby or Andy, whomever is in there as our delegate, to amend by striking 4.635.
And we can give you all the guidance in the world, but things will come up and change and you're going to have to ultimately your decision how you interpret it. It was like a five hour meeting. And then they had to call it early because we lost our forum.
Yes.
They're not going to do that this year.
Is there any other discussion on this or by consensus can we say Bobby, we would like for you to, to strike 4.635 or would you like to wait until January 15th meeting? January, wow.
So Jill, is your.
January 15th?
Jill, is your concern that you want it completely separate from mental health and educators? Or are you reading it as they would be giving educators mental health licensing? Because I read it the opposite way, that they would be giving mental health education licenses, not the other way around. So I just want to make sure that you aren't.
I guess I, I read it the same way as Kristen, but so we could not hire one of them right now, like without an educator license? Is that the way the rule works?
Not to educate.
They're, but they're giving mental health services, so why do they need an educator license?
There may be a situation where that mental health provider would be the best teacher, paraprofessional, whatever that is, that would be easier for them to just be licensed to make sure they're getting appropriate teaching.
I have no idea. So I'll defer to you.
Like it gets really muddy in ways.
But I just want to make sure that if you're, if that's your, if that's your concern, I want to just make sure that that's how you're reading it because I, I would have a bigger concern if it was saying you're giving educator a mental health license, but the other way around seems more acceptable to me.
Are you worried about independence of who your boss is or something also? It'd be the superintendent or the principal versus whoever the boss of a mental health professional is?
I worry about a lot of things. If you go to the doctor to see your doctor for a routine visit, that's your expectation. I, that's my concern. It becomes very muddy and gray. You send your child to school for an education, if somebody's there that can clinically diagnose them, I understand they're certainly intake forms and consent forms and things, but that's where I feel like it becomes really muddy and, and. My concern, my feedback is that our district employs staff to educate and we contract with outside providers to come into our building to provide mental supports and other districts.
Jill, would you be able to offer up a, an amendment, not just by striking that, but to put into an amendment form that Bobby and Andy could speak to at the delegation?
Right now?
No, not right now, but before January 15th.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, this is really just a rewording of what's already in the resolutions. You know, this is not creating new resolution or anything. If you read the rationale part, it's, it's just, changes are meant to remove outdated language, update technology and consolidate resolution language into more concise coherent policy. This is deleting, rewriting existing with the original intent, nothing new is added. And so you're saying you want, this would be striking what's already there.
Yes.
And when I read what's already there, it's, it's easier for me to read that, that new wording, but.
That being said, this is a.
I'm just one person. I just, I'm.
That being said, apparently this has not been taken up by legislatures.
No.
Because it's not law. It's just something that they are wanting to bring to the legislators' attention. Bring something back to us on January the 15th as an amendment to that. Okay, anything else?
I would just like to see the, what he's looking at.
Did, did you not receive one of these? I mean, I received one as the alternate of the resolutions came in a packet. Did you?
I do have that. I didn't know what you were looking at. Yes. Okay.
It would be odd that they would send the alternate stuff in there.
I didn't know what you were looking at.
Is there anything else that a member would like to discuss when we come back and meet in January 15th before the convention? So that's the one item that we will discuss of where we want to give direction to Bobby and Andy at the convention. Okay? Then I will move to item seven, closed session, consideration of a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to section 19.851 of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering, E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. And then item B, consideration of a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to section 19.851 of the Wisconsin statute for the purpose of considering, C, employment, promotion, compensation, or performance, performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Looking for a motion. Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? I'll ask Michelle for a roll call vote, please.
Jill Maddick Nelson?
Yes.
Kristen, Kristen Matt Miller?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Angie Schreiber?
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Catherine Solan?
Yes.
Dr. Dave Bardot?
Yes.
Bobby Braun?
Yes.
And Danny Pyatt, yes.
Danny Pyatt.
We are now in closed session.